Well, come on. I wanted to hear the hot deals.
Are they insane?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Otomo City Council meeting. It's 5:30, so I'm going to call our meeting to order. And the first item, if everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The next item on our agenda is to approve tonight's consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
The next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda, the city administrators' report to council and the citizens. I'll turn it over to Mr. Rath.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. So the one thing I wanted to update in the press release was issued yesterday, but for anyone that doesn't get the Courier or have social media, just to alert the council and the public, investigation into the matters related to the Fire Department has concluded. Based upon the results, the investigation, firefighters Derek Phi and Dylan McPherson, as well as Captain Bill Keith, have been terminated from the City of Otomo effective immediately of yesterday. McPherson had resigned in lieu of termination. Phi was terminated from his position for actions and behaviors that violated department rules, safe practices, and the values and standards of City of Otomo. Keith was terminated from the position for failure to adequately lead those under his command and further displaying an attitude of indifference toward holding employees accountable to the values and standards of the department and City of Otomo. We take all instances of misconduct very seriously. Decision was not made lightly. We expect all employees to adhere to our city's policies and maintain the highest standards of conduct and professionalism. We're taking all necessary steps to ensure that the city remains a safe and ethical environment for our staff. We are committed to a continuity of public service as we work through the staffing changes and will contact relevant staff to discuss a temporary distribution of responsibilities related to the departure of these individuals. We aim to permanently fill these positions as soon as possible, and we appreciate community support and understanding during this sensitive time. And that's what I wanted to highlight tonight.
Okay, thank you, Phil. The next item on the agenda is where I ask if anyone in the public would like to speak on any of the agenda items on our agenda tonight. And I've got two requests already up here, so I'll call your name when we get ready to discuss that particular subject. Is there anybody else that wants to turn in a slip? We also have two people that want to speak later about some non-agenda items, and that will be towards the end of our meeting. So, okay. The next agenda item is public hearings. I'll turn it over to Chris.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the rebid with the new scope of work for the City Hall improvements project.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And I believe, Phil, you're going to cover this?
Yes, Honorable Mayor. So as you're aware, the city had previously bid out the specs for this building for HVAC and remodel. We had contracted with Willett Hoffman Associates to do an evaluation of the heating cooling system and then look at a redesign for the first floor to better accommodate the public and our employees. The current boiler system has been repaired numerous times and in need of replacement. It is thought to be 90 years old. A new HVAC system would include natural gas-fueled hot water heating and VRF cooling with the ability for zone separation control. Additional benefits include the ability to introduce fresh air into the building as makeup air. The first floor remodel would restore much of the original look and feel of the building, would redefine the original public corridor, which allows the flow with acoustic separation needed for professional development environments. The renovation would also address code requirements for accessible means of egress by providing areas of refuge off of second and third floors for use in need if there was an emergency. In order to meet the existing budget, any work that wasn't necessary to remodel the first floor or to install the new HVAC system was removed from the scope of the work that was originally bid and came in too high earlier this year. The number of control zones reduced and the pipes rerouted to streamline construction. Bathroom models for the second and third floor were taken out of the project to be completed at some later date. The bids would be received and opened by the City of Otomo on August 22 at 2:00 p.m. A bid report and bid award recommendation would be presented to the city council meeting on September 5 or at a later date as determined by staff. We're estimating the project costs to be paid for out of the 2022 bond. We had $700,000 towards that, remaining ARPA funds, and the franchise fees that were collected as part of the first half of, or the end of fiscal year '23.
Does council have any questions for Phil? Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any question regarding the remodeling project for City Hall that they'd like to ask our city administrator? If not, I'd go ahead and ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Resolution Number 119-2023, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the City Hall improvements project. Recommendation pass and adopt Resolution Number 119-2023.
With the recommendations presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the matter of the proposed out reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation capital loan notes Series 2022A of the City of Otomo, Iowa. Resolution Number 121-2023, ratifying, confirming, and approving publication of notice of public hearing for the reallocation of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes Series 2022A of the City of Otomo, Iowa. Recommendation pass and adopt Resolution Number 121-2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Prove the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. At our meeting last week, or a couple weeks ago, a presentation was made to look at the possibility of building tennis courts in an area known as the pit. It's owned on school district property. Previously, Resolution 12-2022 was adopted, and that was to authorize the expense of up to $750,000 towards the construction of tennis courts in the Sycamore Park area or the greater Otomo Park area. We had, the staff had put specs together with the contractor. The cost of the project came in considerably higher and anticipated, and the city council rejected the bids. A second set of bids was put out with some changes to that, some modifications. Those also came in higher than desired and what we had set aside funds for. The need for improved tennis courts still is there. Talking with the school district and the presentation, the council, and everyone seemed to be very pleased with that location and to move forward with that. The next day after that meeting was informed that the project in question is smack dab in the middle of a sewer separation project that would be scheduled to be bid out this January and constructed next year. That would delay the cost or the potential bid, building of tennis courts in that location. We are working to see if there is any way to work around that. We don't have that answer tonight specifically. In the interim, to keep the construction of tennis courts underway, there's a look at the possibility of still building on that site either next year or in the future after the construction, and looking at a remodel or rehab, I'm sorry, rehabilitation of the Dan Stages courts that are currently in greater Otomo Park. We have construction documents and cost estimates that had been done previously, updated the cost estimates, assumed that it'd be a little over $400,000 to rehab the Dan Stages courts. A lot of the cracking seems to appear around where the light posts used to be in the center of the courts. Those have been moved to the exterior, but the cracking is still there. So the work would include removing all of the asphalt, including those concrete bases, and then relaying three to four inches of asphalt in that place, striping, and then putting the fencing back in. And that's where that cost comes in. We have identified that there is potential for a window this fall yet to look at building that. That would allow for tennis to continue, and then the school district to build the courts at a time that is convenient with any other project, but also on their schedule if it is delayed. Should those courts at Stages not be needed for tennis in the future, they could be repurposed into pickleball or other things like that. So there still would be some use for them until the project, overall comprehensive park plan project, would look at that being turned into ball fields in the distant future. So I guess what I'm requesting here from the council is to consider moving forward with rehabilitation of the Stages courts, using money that has already been bonded for, to have that go towards that project. And any remaining funds going towards the tennis court project for the school district with a future bonding to make up the difference that they were looking for of that $750,000. So that is kind of the layout, and we have the notice here. The first thing we're looking at is, at that same meeting a couple weeks ago, the council said to have a public hearing for this. So this, the first part is ratifying that confirmation, and then we'll get into the rest of it, but the two are tied together. So I want to give you the background on that.
Does council have any questions for Phil?
I do. Phil, can you, or Administrator Rath, can you please give me the rehabilitation cost again?
Yeah, it was, I want to say it was about $408,000 was estimated. My recommendation would be to maybe reserve about $500,000 towards that and get that project bid out to see what those actual costs would be. And then the remaining funds could be used towards the start of the school district project, and then the balance to be bonded for in a future bonding cycle.
So that would, so I just want to clarify. So $500,000 for this project, and then so that would leave about $200,000 out, and then an additional $500,000?
Correct.
So, because the reason I'm asking is, so we had originally identified or allocated $700,000, so then with this project, we would be actually allocating, no, originally we said $750,000, but because of this, we had to take, or $500,000, right?
Yeah, so $750,000 was allocated towards tennis court projects within the city park. And under that type of bonding, it was able to have up to $750,000. But reallocating it to the general purpose limits the city to $700,000. So if it's moved off of the city park property, then only $700,000 can be put towards that project for bonding purposes.
So, but now we're looking at about $1.2 million for the two projects, correct?
Yes. Yeah, so that would be, now, the Stages courts are still in a state of disrepair. There's something has to be done with those, whether that's removing them entirely or rehabilitating them to a level that they could be used again. And then there is the question about the construction of the courts that would be moved to the school district property.
Okay. So today, you're only asking for the original $700,000 that we talked about at last time, correct? Not the additional at a later, the additional $500,000 potentially?
So the question here, well, I guess first of all, maybe this one is just to, that we're ratifying, confirming, and approving the notice of the public hearing. And then in the next resolution, we'll address the extra money.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Phil?
Yeah, I have one. The park plan that was just adopted not too long ago, the tennis courts that we're talking about rehabilitating, how did those fit into the parks plan that was adopted?
Yeah, so that's where I was referring to, is the future park plan, those tennis courts would not be there. That would be ball fields. The whole quadrant there was all ball fields, like 17 ball fields. But it is going to take time to build all of that out. And so that would be one of the last areas built out. So we have 10 to 15 years at a minimum, I would say, before the funds are raised to build all that out. This is purposing those courts until such time.
And what's the lifespan we're talking about if we redid these tennis courts?
For that, to Gene?
Okay. And I'm just trying to backpedal into this just a little bit. What would be the purpose, long-term, of these tennis courts if the school district tennis courts are going to be open to the public? What will be the future use of this particular project?
That's where I'd mention, and Gene confirmed this, the popularity of pickleball. Those courts could easily be turned into pickleball courts, you know, once the surfacing is all done. It's a matter of striping and changing any netting that would be necessary, but they could be repurposed into pickleball courts, which is something that the park board had been interested in. Turn it over, Gene.
So if that's the case, then what would be the intended use of the courts that are down on Church Street? Because my understanding was the original use of those was going to be pickleball courts.
Those ones have been talked about for a number of things, including additional parking for that area or other commercial development along Church Street corridor.
Okay. So for, just so I'm clear, looking at the parks plan, we're 15 years out potentially from that area being developed for baseball softball fields?
I'm not aware of significant funds or fundraising efforts for baseball softball. I'm aware of tennis, and I'm aware of soccer. So I would say we are, long-term, out of ways on that full baseball softball complex being built out.
Okay. I'm just really concerned that we would be spending upwards of half a million dollars on something that in even 10 years would get demolished for a baseball field. That's where my concern is.
Yeah. No, I agree. And that was one of the reasons if I really thought that we'd be that much further ahead, I would look at something else completely. But that has eight courts there. The Traeger Park has four courts, I believe, and that wouldn't be sufficient to use, I mean, get by. But I think for, my understanding is, eight courts is better for the high school tennis. Practice and games.
So looking at timelines, and maybe I'm incorrect on this, so please correct me if I am wrong. I thought that the timeline of the parks plan was going to be the Sycamore Park area where the sportsplex was going to be, and at the time, tennis courts. Then we were going to be looking at soccer, and then we were going to be immediately after that looking at the baseball and softball areas. So if we're looking at the next year or two, since the tennis courts are kind of out of the way and the sportsplex is taking care of itself, if in the next year or two that we'll be working on the soccer fields, which isn't going to take but a year or so to complete, what are we going to be doing with the parks plan for that eight-year gap or 10-year gap?
Well, I think there's fundraising, there is building out any parts of that. There were some areas of the park that were passive recreation. I mean, there's some things in there that could be done. We're still filling in the area where baseball softball would go with the dirt, and that'll have to be surfaced and have that rest before we can build on that. So I mean, there's some things that are going to be going on along with that. As far as tennis, that, the initial thought with that was with funds from the school district, with the city funds, and with the future fundraising dollars, that that would be something that could be built out. But with the recent bids coming in high and the desire for the school district to move out of that, that would remove their money as well. So the tennis in that area is not feasible.
Understood.
With just the city dollars. So that unfortunately takes that off. Soccer is still moving forward, as far as I understand, and so their fundraising, that might be the first thing built out then. And so I was looking at trying to have that tennis aspect still there and fill that gap if we're looking at a year or two before the site can be built at the pit.
Okay.
Any other questions from council for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Now for the actual public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and I'll turn it back over to City Administrator Phil Rath.
Okay. The only thing I want to add to that is, since that last meeting and the information about this site being under construction next year for the sewer separation, have had active conversations with the school superintendent, and he and other staff have had conversations with our staff about looking at, is there anything to be done with reworking the site and trying to still build some of the tennis courts, even a lesser number at the pit area? And that's where they're looking for, having some of those funds come forward now and complete that. We don't have that answer here tonight, and if that is going to be feasible or not, we're continuing to find that information. It should have that, I believe, by the next meeting. So as far as an official vote on those funds, may want to postpone that part. But I at least wanted to let council and the public know that, you know, we're working to see what can be done with that site. That part aside, though, if we're looking at trying to do anything with rehabbing the Stages courts, there's a small window there with looking at trying to still move that project forward yet this fall, which would give the school district the ability to have tennis this spring and then anyone else in the public. I think they're wrapping up a tournament this week, the Dan Stages Tournament Fifth Annual, and they're playing on three courts right now at the club. And that has been a little difficult. They were playing late into the night, last night, we're trying to get that wrapped up. So tennis is becoming a little more popular in the community, and that's the reason for looking at doing something with the Stages courts to keep that project going and that sport going while we're waiting out the construction of the sewer separation, which has some federal dollars tied to it as well. Another reason why we need to look at continuing with that project next year.
Does council have any questions for Phil? We do have one individual that'd like to speak on the task court, but I thought I'd ask council first. Okay. Would David Locke like to come up to the podium and the microphone and state your name and address? And you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. I'm David Locke. I live at 242 South Willard. I think the tennis course is great, but you haven't looked at the streets to get there. They're terrible. If you want to get state meets into Otomo, people from Des Moines and Altoona, wherever the courts are now, they're going to laugh at Otomo. You can't get to it. I mean, the road's going to have to be at least two-way. There are one-way right now to get to it, and you've got to have almost a four-wheel drive. You didn't figure the cost of fixing the streets. If I was a visitor to come to Otomo and I see this pit, I go, we're not coming back, even though if you have 12 courts, you'd have to cut your cost, probably half that to fix your streets. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. Any other comments from the audience? Any other comments from council?
I would just say, I'm still struggling with, we went from up to 750 to, you know, 1.2 million about. And that, I'm struggling with that. I understand that those other courts need to be rehabbed, or as Councilperson Rowe said, you know, in the next couple of years, were they going to be gone? But that, that just seems like we're putting a lot in. And don't get me wrong, the school has done a lot for our community, too. And, you know, I love the idea of where we're looking to place the courts, and I understand that there's been a hiccup. But at the same time, I mean, an extra 500, you know, approximately an extra $500,000 is a lot of money for, so I'm just, I'm struggling with that aspect of it right now.
Yeah. No, and I understand that fully. Let me just reference Mr. Locke's comments real quick. Part of the sewer separation project would be the road repair, you know, full-depth utility replacement and street repair in that area. So hopefully it would take care of those roads there. Yes, so we were looking at one project, one tennis project that was going to be estimated about $2.2 million, and the city was putting in about a third of that, or $750,000. This is talking about, and it didn't do anything for the Stages courts, so that was still an issue that was going to have to be resolved, whatever that cost was, depending on whatever solution was going to be done there. Again, removal or whatever else. Now we're looking at the possibility of two projects. So one would be rehabbing the Stages courts for use of tennis in the near future, most likely pickleball courts in the distant future. And that is looking at $400,000 to $500,000 of city cost for that, and then looking at a separate project of tennis court facility that the city has still asked to put in that third or that $750,000 for. It's 700 on here tonight, because that's what we're able to do. But if we were to bond in the future, we could put in that up to $750,000 that was requested as part of that. So now we're looking at two different projects that would, again, then be about $1.25 million for the city.
Yeah. And again, I understand that that's two projects, but again, we had looked at about $750,000. And so now, you know, I understand that we're back at the original, like, $700,000, but in the near future, there's going to be another meeting up here where we're going to be asked for, to approve more money. And that's where I'm struggling with, because we went from one project to two projects. And I understand that you said those needed to be done at some point, but I don't remember hearing about those courts. So this is new to me. And because, again, I'm with Councilperson Rowe, where I thought we were going to be turning those into baseball courts, or baseball fields.
Yeah, I'm like Councilperson Galloway. I'm not real comfortable with voting on something that we don't know. We're voting on desperation right now if we vote tonight. We're voting to hurry up and try to get something. And then if it don't work, we'll turn around and ask for more money later on. So I say we table this vote until we have more information or more of a certain plan on what we're going to do, because I'm not a fan of paying $500,000 when we agreed up to 750, the original number.
And if that's a motion, Doug, I would second that motion.
I motion we table this vote till a future meeting.
And I would second that.
Don't we have to close the public hearing first?
Yes.
Is there any other comments or questions from council? Since this is a public hearing, is there anybody else in the audience that wants to say anything before we close the public hearing? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Resolution Number 122-2023, instituting proceedings to take additional action and approving the reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation capital loan notes Series 2022A of the City of Otomo, Iowa. Recommendation pass and adopt Resolution Number 122-2023. Doug, do you want to make your motion again, so it's officially on the record?
I make a motion that we table this to another meeting.
Is there a second?
I would second that motion until we have more information.
Okay, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull? Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull? Ordinance number 3215, 2023, amending the municipal code of the city of Atumwa, Iowa by repealing and replacing sections 2-30 and 2-58 of chapter two for the purpose of increasing compensation of the mayor and city council members. Recommendation pass the first consideration of ordinance number 3215, 2023.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Okay, Phil.
All right. So this will be the first reading of this ordinance. Compensation for the mayor and city council members has been at the same level since 1999. Proposed ordinance would increase the annual compensation for the mayor from $9,000 to $10,200. And the annual compensation for city council members would increase from $4,000 to $6,000. In accordance with state law, the compensation does not take effect until the beginning of the term following an election, which would be January of 2024 for council members and January of 2026 for mayor. So these numbers were arrived by looking at similar-sized communities across the state of Iowa and what the compensation is for their various positions. And, you know, looking at the history of, like I said, this was 1999 was the last time this was addressed, and there have been significant changes to cost of living in the last 23, 24 years. So the recommendation was to adjust this pay to those levels to take effect upon the following election, following the terms of those elections.
Does council have any questions or comments for Phil?
I guess I'm probably the, the person who is going to be least affected by this potentially, so I don't mind speaking. I will say, in, in my time that I've had the pleasure of serving on council, one thing that I have learned is if you get elected to this office for the money, you're completely in it for the wrong reasons. This, this pay arguably is far below minimum wage for, regardless of whether you're a council member or mayor. At most points in time, we would never ask anybody in any environment to work below minimum wage. And I know myself, former councilman Bob Myers has done it, former councilman Skip Stevens did it, former councilman Matt Dobey did it, former councilwoman Holly Berg. All of us have separately calculated what our per-hour rate would be. And in some occasions, it was less than $2 per hour. And again, anybody who's running for one of these seats for a paycheck is clearly doing it for the wrong reasons, and they should never run nor hold office. But that being said, for two reasons, I think that this is something that should be voted up. Number one, there is no position that I can think of anywhere, even the minimum wage itself that has stayed stagnant since 1999. That's just something that is, hasn't happened. And number two, while money is not and should not be the driver for somebody to run for a public office, I think that a nice incentive would be for those folks to run, the qualified folks that could sit up here and make qualified decisions, having, having a check that is not something that is a pittance pay, basically, would be something that would be nice to see go through. And again, you know, I may or may not see any benefit from this, so it doesn't really matter to me what the council does, but I fully support this.
Thank you, Councilman Rowe. Any other comments from any other council people?
I have a couple of questions, and it probably Barb would be better to answer these. When, this came about from the compensation study, obviously. So when you guys did that, did you look on the mayor's position? Did you guys put together, like every other position, kind of a job description of what their duties actually are? Because I know, like, there's been some, there's been some, well, it should be this and it should be that, but did you guys actually overview that and look at what other mayors are doing compared to what our mayors are doing?
There was no job description that was done. It was more of, when we reached out about all of the comparables, some of the questions that were asked were like, how many meetings do you do? How often? How many hours per week do you expect? And so we were able to weed out some of those salaries where, because in some cities, department has actually report to the mayor. And so that, you know, we knew that that was not, we could not use that as a comparable city. So we looked at cities of comparable size and comparable meetings and things like that. And that's where we came up with this, this dollar amount. But there was no job description for council or mayor that was completed, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Resolution number 120, 2023, approving a right-of-way agreement between the city of Atumwa and Citizens Mutual Telephone Cooperative and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 120, 2023.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Okay, Phil.
All right. Citizens Mutual Telephone Cooperative, facilities-based service provider, constructing, operating, and maintaining fiber optic networks and delivering communication services to its customer both above ground and underground, delivering those services using the network in certain city right-of-ways. Citizens Mutual, or CMTC, will be operating and maintaining its fiber optic cable system along, under, and upon the streets, avenues, alleys, and public places in the city of Atumwa. The proposed lines CMTC intends to run in Atumwa are to connect the network to trunk lines available in the city in order to better serve CMTC's rural customers. Working with legal counsel, the attached agreement was developed, and it's my understanding that, for the most part, CMTC is servicing all the rural customers, but they need to be able to get their services from one end to the other. And so there is some right-of-way that they'd be looking to use, and this agreement is consistent with previous right-of-way agreements we've had for fiber customer, or fiber providers.
And just to clarify for the public, this in no way interferes with what MCG is doing about laying the fiber within the city of Atumwa, correct?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, that is a separate project from this, but we do have to treat all entities similarly. And like I said, this agreement would be in line or inconsistent, or would be consistent with the one that MCG had with the city.
Council, have any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull? Resolution number 123, 2023, approve the leasing agreement between GovTemp USA LLC and the city of Atumwa for the provision of finance consultation services. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 123, 2023.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
All right. So, let's see. This was, she didn't want to get to that quick. With the vacancy of the city accountant position, finance department is down to key staff position, marketing position, staff identified viable temporary solution to aid the finance department while we search for a full-time position. Administration is seeking assistance from GovTemp USA LLC on a part-time, limited basis. These services will assist staff and provide expert advice as necessary to maintain the accounting standards required for sound financial practices until a successor candidate can be placed in the role. Copy of engagement letter, which has been reviewed by staff and legal counsel, is attached for review and approval. So as you know, we have been without an accountant position. We had contracted for the services with a local firm and gotten some support there, but it's been on a limited basis. Went out to fill this position and it did not have great success there. So we're looking to fill that gap until we can get somebody in place. Reached out to GovHR, and this is an offshoot of their firm, where they have people that may be retired or in-between positions that are looking to still stay within the field. And this is an opportunity to, for us to get the much-needed help and them to, to be able to fill that for us.
Does council have any questions or comments for Phil?
As I say, as you can see from the agreement, it's about a three-month stint. It could be extended, depending on the person's availability and the interest by the city. But this would give us an opportunity to continue that.
Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Resolution number 124, 2023, designating a portion of Minerva Avenue with the honorary name Trevor's Way. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 124, 2023.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Okay, Phil.
So an application was received to designate the intersection of Minerva Avenue and West Second Street to honor the life of Trevor Stromgen, Stromgen. The sign can be made by city staff, would be white lettering on a red background, installed below the current street sign. The request does not change any addresses along the route, and this one was signed off on by Councilman McIntyre. And I believe the applicant is here, is he have?
Yes, he'd like to speak.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Stromgen, would you like to come up to the podium and give your name and address? And you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Dave Stromgren. My wife Nancy and I live on the corner of Minerva and West Second, and would like to tell you a little bit about Trevor. Trevor was diagnosed with cancer at age three. At that time, they lived in St. Petersburg, Florida, where he started treatment. As the cancer progressed, he was transferred to M.D. Anderson in Houston, Texas, for more aggressive treatment. At that time, due to finance, my brother lost his house, stuck in Florida. So a lady gave him enough money to get to Atumwa so they could start over, and his treatment was transferred to Lake Children's Hospital. At the time when they moved back, we started a can collection in Trevor's name, and the city of Atumwa just gave us can after can, which enabled us to help hundreds of other people whose children had pediatric cancer and was going through financial strains. Well, one thing about Trevor and his fight, when we'd go to fundraisers, he'd always find a basket. In that basket, there'd be something that he'd see for one of his friends, and he'd bid on it and buy it so he could break it down and give it to his friends. We were at one fundraiser, and he bid on a basket, and it was outbid. So he bid again, it was outbid. And he bid a third time, was outbid, and he touched the heart of Brian Morgan. And Brian Morgan went up, wrote "Sold" on it, paid for it, and gave it to him so he could break it up and give it to his friends. As time goes on, Trevor lost his battle with cancer. And we live on West Second. We started a, a little donation station outside our house called Pay It Forward, where people would drop off items they don't need, pick up stuff that was there. And we're having coffee one morning, knock on the door, and here's Rob Reed. Rob Reed says, "I've seen what you've gone through. You've outrun your station. We'd like to give you a building. We'd like to build it and donate it." I'm all about getting a free building. Couple weeks later, a roll-off shows up, and here's this 20-foot building, 10 feet deep, with two shells in it. Not only that, Rob was there with his crew, and they dug out an entire area and set the building, for gravel in it, set the building, leveled it, and gravelled it. And on the front of that building, he dedicated it to Team Trevor. It's dedicated to Trevor Stromgren. I just thought I'd share that with you, because that's how many people he's live touched.
Well, we really appreciate getting the background information. It sounds like Trevor was a very special young gentleman, and I really appreciate Councilman McIntyre for presenting the nomination for the council to consider tonight. Does council have any other comments they'd like to make? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
It's going to get renamed. This is a point in our council meeting where I ask the audience if they'd like to address or speak on any non-agenda items, and we do have three people that have requested to speak. So I will call each of you up individually to the microphone and state your name and your address. And here again, everybody will be given three minutes to address the council. First up will be Zachary Geider.
Hi, my name's Zachary Geider. I live on 703 Morris Street. What I'd like to discuss tonight is the state code versus the city code on reptiles, specifically snakes. Your state code has species-specific or genus-specific for venomous snakes and species-specific for what's considered dangerous constrictors. The city code literally says venomous snakes and non-venomous constrictors. Scientifically speaking, there is only two. Your random garter snake you'd happen to find, if your kid brings it in and keeps it in a fish tank, which is perfectly legal by DNR rules and everything else, you're technically in violation of city code because a garter snake is even rear-fang venomous, just by the specifications that's given scientifically. We're being told corn snakes, king snakes, milk snakes, those are okay. There's 40 species of python or more, and the state only has three of them, or two of them listed that are illegal. That'd be your rock python and your reticulate python. The snake in question that caused this whole thing was a Burmese python. Any snake over 10 feet, or that's kind of out, up for question, but your main snakes that are large, like extremely large, in my opinion, nobody should have anyways without proper education. Those are already illegal. But the way the code is, it leaves it to the discretion of what is and what isn't. What I'm asking is just to amend it, to add those names in, the families of the venomous snakes, anything in that family is automatically illegal in the state. So that just affirms that. Constrictor-wise, add what's there. I would gladly like to see Burmese python in there also, because nobody needs a 13-foot snake in their house. The rattles, or the rattlesnake, that's in with the venomous stuff. I'm not good at speaking, I'm sorry. So the reptile industry in itself nationwide is 4.5 billion, or $1.5 billion industry. 4.5 million homes in the United States have at least one reptile in the house. 800,000 of those are a ball python. So a ball python attains the same size as my king snakes, three to five feet. They're harmless. A child can play with it, nothing, it's not going to be big enough to be dangerous whatsoever. Sand boas, two feet. There's so many species that are very lucrative to even breed, like we're looking at breeding snakes as an actual business, taxable income. There's so many species of snakes that don't attain that size that are considered to be dangerous whatsoever. So I guess what I'm asking is if we could, you know, have it on the agenda to address adding the verbiage in to make a set list of what is illegal and make it concurrent with Iowa code or Iowa law, and add Burmese to that, because Burmese isn't on the Iowa law. But that's a snake that can attain a size that is definitely able to hurt a child, as happened before.
Okay. Your time is up, but I appreciate your comments, and that council really can't take any action on it tonight since it's not an agenda item, but they will take an advisory advisement and decide whether they want to put it on a future council meeting. other advisement and decide whether they want to put it on a future council meeting agenda. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Lester Dan Hartog.
I live at 464 East Rochester. And I've got a question about the local area sales tax, loss tax. It's not exactly canceled every place, but my Alliant Energy bill had the 3% on it. You guys, you have to notify somebody. Internet sales are still seven. There's several merchants, because I went around town buying nickel candy bars, well, they're not nickel, but anyway, charging me 7% yet. And there's more than one merchant still starting seven, still charging 7%.
Do you understand what the 3% is on your electric and your gas bill?
Yeah.
That's the franchise fee.
I understood from Phil that when the 3% went on, the loss, local area sales tax was going off. It's not off.
Now, the local option sales tax is the 1%?
Yes.
Yeah. So that 1% should have dropped off?
No, that's what I'm telling you.
Okay.
You say should have. Who should have told these people?
So, no, so he's saying that, so the local option sales tax dropped off your Alliant and Mid-American bill. The people in the city still will charge the one, the local option sales. You'll, you'll still pay it through a retailer. You will not pay it through Mid-American and Alliant.
What Phil said. He said that would disappear, the local option.
It does through Mid-American and Alliant.
From the utility bill?
Yeah.
Only from the utility bill. It would replace that on the utility bill, not across the city.
How come the county lost $160,000 according to that tax then?
That was what they received from the utilities.
Okay.
From the gas and electric.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Dan Hartog. Our last person that would like to address the council is Andrea Songer Dudley.
Hello. I'm Andrea Songer Dudley, and I live at 308 Randolph Street here in Atumwa. Swift feet rescue and deliver justice to the people. Everyone and every place has a set of general procedures for normal operating conditions. That's the way we do things. But if there's a change in the circumstance, people adapt their behavior in order to be successful in different circumstances. When driving, we all travel a uniform speed and avoid unexpected stops and turns by using signals and forethought. We communicate. But if you hear sirens and see lights, this necessitates adaptation and switching to a special set of actions. We let first responders go past. We yield. We stop. When the emergency is over, the usual, everyday driving resumes. I know each of you has a heart to serve the community, and you have everyone's best interests in mind as you write ordinances. These rules usually are the best way. But today, I humbly request you reexamine statutes which allow for no exceptions. Should somebody acting altruistically to protect their community from harm be punished for doing so? Is it just to outlaw actions which are best practices recommended by experts of federal agencies and county, as well as our local, our local county people? Thinking of how in the old days, one could add soil compost and manure to their garden to fertilize it and add nutrients, I decided to do just that for my garden this year. So I added several bags of this compost, and I now have this obnoxious, invasive, non-native weed that destroys crops and is very terrible, as well as contaminated my organic garden with herbicides. They are extremely prolific at multiplying and are resistant to just about anything that would try to kill them. Today, in one square foot, I pulled 20 of them. 10,000 to 1 million seeds per plant. My seeds will be viable within the next week or two. The USDA and the Wupla County Weed Commissioner said, burn it, but that's illegal. Pigweed, don't you wrinkle your nose at the sound of the word? This weed is toxic, careless weed. Even deadly for some livestock species. It is water-hungry, nutrient-consuming vampire. It causes edema and many other symptoms. My eyes and skin hurt from pulling these weeds in this herbicide all the time. And I'm hoping that you can give me a window or a door instead of a wall to work with. I've dried the weeds so that they should burn easily, should I get some way to do this. Also, in the meantime, I do have a question. While you work on considering these things and any other ordinances that say no exceptions, is there a time you might need an exception? Can we create a framework or a protocol of procedures to deal with those circumstances effectively and swiftly? This might thwart disaster in a different situation down the road that we don't even know about yet. So that's what I would ask. And also, can I use any kind of heating if I'm not starting a fire to get rid of these seeds in the next week or two? Because I need to do it soon. That would be all I have.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak on any item that's not on our agenda tonight? Okay. The next thing we're going to do is recess our council meeting. We're going to go into closed session downstairs. And the reason for that is we're going to talk about some goal-setting that the council's been working with the city administrator on. So we are going to go ahead and recess. Our council meeting go downstairs in room 108 into closed session. And once we're done with that, we will go ahead and adjourn tonight's city council meeting from that room downstairs. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Did anybody on the council have any reports or announcements that they wanted to give? Okay. Thank you very much. We stand in recess.
I'm going into closed session.
They go downstairs to do that, Christine.
Christine, they will go downstairs into another room, and then go into closed session. They'll take a vote to go in down there.
Yeah, the vote has to occur in open session to go into closed session.
Yeah, we will, we will go downstairs.
We usually resume the meeting in open session downstairs. Take a vote to go into closed session downstairs.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.